Victor Rodriguez, how are you, sir?
I'm fine, thank you. I'm fine.
Great. Thank you for coming today. I appreciate it.
Well, I'm looking forward to it. I haven't, this is the first podcast I've ever done in the city council business for eight years. So I'm kind of excited.
Oh, good.
Glad to meet you and I think you're a fine young man and I can't wait to get this thing on the road.
Appreciate it. Do this, crunch your headphones up on the, on the right. They're just hanging a little, yeah, yeah, there you go. Yeah, there you go. There you go. Perfect. We're perfect. Perfect. I just want to make sure you're here just right. Listen, you're running for, excuse me, running for reelection for city council of Nampa. You have a very long career in law enforcement. You bring a slightly different perspective than the average person, average bear, obviously. Why are you running for reelection?
There's a couple of different reasons why. Number one, I like the way we're moving. I like the way we're going. I'm not finished with my job yet. I want to keep the, the direction of growth, of a conservative budget, a good budget for the community. Example, the budget for this year for Nampa is $310 million. Each taxpayer will pay that for our year 26. And we've got it down to if you own your, if your home is worth $400,000, you'd be paying about $20 a year for city services. And I think that's pretty good. But the other thing is, is to keep Nampa what it is. And it's grown so much in the environment, the character. Keep it from being another metropolitan city that's not ready for the growth, that's able to handle the growth and not ready. And the other thing is for public safety, to keep our community safe. Those are in a nutshell, the reasons why. And, and, and we're getting there now. Our council is, is a pro-public safety and so we're halfway there. I think we're, Nampa is a good place to live and I want to keep it that way.
One, one question. You said if you have a $400,000 house, the city portion, the city service portion of your property tax bill is really just like $20 a year?
Yes.
That's wild. How do you guys fund anything with that?
That's the problem. That's the problem that we're trying to, to take care of. Let me show, let me give, tell you if, our budget this year is based on, in, in, okay, here we go. So let's say that 1% cost for the taxpayer for our budget is $2.80 per 100,000 of taxable value.
Okay.
So 3% would be $8.40. So if, can you imagine $8.40 for city services on your property taxes? That's part of the 310 million. Isn't that crazy? But that's good because it's a very conservative and we handle what we have to handle, streets, roads, infrastructure, public safety, water, sewer irrigation. And we, the city of Nampa, is the only city that handles our own streets and roads. And so this, this year was only a 1.32% increase in our budget from last year. This year we had, we had to use foregone taxes. Foregone taxes is about $2.80. Foregone taxes is we have a maximum of total of 3%, but we can take every year. And sometimes we just do 2%.
Sure.
Maybe $8, $7 a year. Doesn't sound right, does it? But that's, that's what it is.
Yeah, it doesn't. That's, that's amazing that it's so little.
It is. But you've got to remember, we've got close to 50,000 homes and buildings and, and businesses. So this year, because we couldn't fund as many police officers as we wanted to, which was about eight or 10, we're down something like 26, that we had to use a foregone tax and $2.80 per residence, irregardless of price. Altogether, that said, that's $11.20 for your city services.
And that's the increase this year?
Yeah, that's all it is. Last year, I think we were at $10.20, something like that. Isn't that amazing? $11.20 to run a $310 million budget to run the city of Nampa. That's pretty good.
That's wild.
It's wild, isn't it?
Now, the, it was my understanding that essentially roughly all of the money collected from property tax in Nampa, because you have multiple funding sources, right, to make the revenue, but all of the property tax from the city of Nampa goes directly to, essentially roughly directly to the police department. Is that accurate?
Pretty much. I think they're, the, the police department's budget is so huge, $40 million. And I think our tax, what we receive is about 38, 39 million. So it doesn't even, it doesn't even. And now mix in, so what we use, we have to use other sources, which is sales tax. We get about, I think maybe six, $7 million in sales tax. And so we have to dip into that. That also has to do with dipping in for our, our streets. And yeah, our budget's pretty tight, let me tell you. And so, but we're at max, we're maximum 3% and we use some foregone now. We can't go anywhere else. So that's the tough part. Yeah.
And I'm sorry for my ignorance, that you have the property tax revenue, which is about 38, 39 million. Then you have your sales tax. And what's the last major piece of revenue for the city?
We can use construction.
Gotcha. Like impact fees, mitigation fees. Gotcha.
Yeah. We don't have mitigation fees, but we do have, which is a good idea though. And I'm sure the people that don't know what mitigation fees are, is, I'll just explain. It's, it's not a fee that the city of Nampa has or wants. I do support that.
Okay, explain this. So impact fees are like, look, I'm building this house, okay? This is the house I'm building and this house, once built, it impacts the road over here because now I got, let's say I got 10 cars. I don't have 10 cars, but let's say I got 10 cars and they're impacting the road, right? So then we say, hey, look, we need these impact fees because when these things, when this house is built, it's going to do X to the road. And so therefore we need to upgrade the road, right? So whatever the impact is, and the impact fees are used for physical things, like you're building a new fire station, you're building, you're upgrading infrastructure, things of that nature. Mitigation is different though. Talk to me about mitigation fees.
Okay, mitigation fee, there's no such thing in Nampa. There are, there is a mitigation fees assessed to development, I think in Eagle and Starr.
Yes, I believe so too.
Yeah, but I don't know that we have that. In fact, we discussed that and it doesn't appear that, according to our legal attorneys, that, that we will be applying that. I'm not convinced that we, we should, we should stop it. I think we should continue to discuss it. But let me talk, talk about the impact fees. If a developer comes into Nampa and he begins the process of building a huge subdivision, or even a little subdivision.
Sure.
He has to pay impact fees. The impact fees are, for example, public safety, parks, streets, infrastructure, water, sewer. He does all that, but then he pays the city for that. But then again, some parts of that, those impact fees, the city of Nampa has to, have to equal it. So.
Oh, so it has to be like dollar for dollar matching. Gotcha.
Some of that does. But then again, when you, when you have, when our, our revenue doesn't, doesn't, well, not revenue, but.
When the money coming in.
When the money coming in is, is not enough to fulfill the services that we need, that's where the gap is. So I think the impact fees, I wish, can only, can only be used for new developments. It can't be used for old pipes, for maintenance or repairs. That's my problem because now new development equals a new street somewhere else.
Sure.
And we need to take care of those streets that we live in and we walk in and we, we drive on, that's been here for 100, 200 years. But we can't use that for that. So I worry about that. But.
And the pipes that they're trying, like for instance, pipe infrastructure, it's like you, you build a new development and you tie into an existing sewer line. Now you're using the existing sewer line. You paid for the new one. That's fine. But you're using the existing sewer line and that continues to get degraded because of that use. And those impact fees are not paying to repair the sewer line.
You're absolutely right. And that's my concern. I keep saying, why are we paying for new developments when we should be paying for, for maintaining of our streets? Yeah. And that's, that's a difficult one there. And so I.
Because you have the obligation to match certain impact fees. So then that, or the, the funds that are available to the city to work on things like that gets sucked away for the new development and they can't be redirected back because again, with the impact fees, some of them require city participation and matching.
Exactly.
You know, nobody's explained that to me before. That's a really, really important point. Yeah, holy cow.
It's like this, and I have a, I have a coffee test. Get a cup of coffee.
I got one.
Yeah, I know you do. And, and, and drive down Roosevelt Avenue where I live. And see how far it goes on your lap when you get done to the new subdivision. And then the new subdivision, you have beautiful, smooth roads and you can put the coffee cup on your head and never spill it. The problem being is Roosevelt, we can't fix it. It almost, we can't take it apart and then fix it.
Sure.
It's almost, the cost is $1 million per, I think, half, half, half a mile. Well, we've got, yeah, I mean, you just can't. So now you see the, the property tax that goes to streets and roads. It just doesn't, it's not sufficient, not even for one quarter of a mile of, of such a road. That's crazy.
It is. And again, to, to, to the earlier point, Roosevelt is getting tied into a new subdivision, right, our new street. And although that might be smooth, those people coming out of there are going to be driving and further degradating the existing road. And the funds for those people and their houses and the developer and everything just pays for the nice fancy road. It doesn't upgrade the, the road that they're going to spill out onto.
Right. But the impact fees can be used on new development, which would be, which would be like around Highway 16, which is a new development. Well, that doesn't do us any good because it's a new development. The developers are already paying for that, already doing that. So why can't we use that for something else? That's what I'm going to be pushing for after I win the election is to get with, get with the state legislature and say, we need to change this because we're, we're not able to fix our roads. And there's got to be another alternative because we can't tax the taxpayers for that. We're already taxing as much as we can and that's the limit. So anyway, that's my idea.
Right. And as much, I mean, truthfully also, it's as much as the taxpayer wants to be taxed too. Like you could run an override levy or you could do something, but if the, if the city of Nampa is like, listen, man, we, we have been diligently paying our taxes. Now we have additional wear and tear because of growth. Why are we going to be paying more for the damage and impact that the growth, I mean, this is a whole argument, age old almost, of growth has to pay for growth. And in some areas, it may be, right? One of the big problems that people run into, for instance, in Starr, is that Starr has grown so quickly, they can't keep up with the services, like the fire services and whatnot. Because this was actually crazy. One of the guys running for city council brought in his property tax bill from 2020 and then brought in his property tax bills for 2025. It has gone down. His bill has gone down like 50%. Because the distribution of the, the bill has been distributed over twice as many people now, right? If, if it's a million dollars to fund the city, it was a million dollars getting distributed over 10,000 people. Now it's a million dollars getting distributed over 24,000 people, not 10. So his bill has actually gone down, but the services have not been able to keep up with that explosive growth, right? And so there is that big problem of like, okay, growth is actually paying to drop everybody's property tax, but the way that the money collected and the way the money is distributed, it makes it so, you know, like the money's not going back into the services that everyone needs. So, you know, when you talk about hitting the legislature and saying, look, we got to work something out, like this is a problem all across the Treasure Valley.
It is. It is. You know, you talk about growth paying for itself. Well, it's not. And here's, here's a prime example. In 2017, the, our Napa city budget was $171 million.
That's 2017, eight years ago?
Yeah, eight years ago. And, and, and our, and our, and our, our population was about, I'd say 85,000, maybe 80 to 90,000, somewhere around there.
Sure.
Okay. So take it today, 310 million because of growth. Three, I mean, that's a $138 million increase and we still can't fund it. We can't fund growth the way we want. So.
And what, what's the population now? When from like 80?
130,000.
Oh, wow. You guys have jumped up like 60% or something.
Amazing. And so, and, and, and now, in order to supply the services that, that our, that our taxpayers want, the new homeowners or old homeowners, what they are paying for is for sewer, water, domestic water, irrigation, streets, roads. Oh, and now we don't have enough employees to take care of that. So that forces the city of Nampa, who back in 2017, had 458 employees who could handle streets, who could handle sewer, could handle all that. Now we're up to 858 million, I mean, not million, 858 employees. Right. Isn't that crazy? And we still can't fund the police department. We had, there's 155 or so police officers. And you take, you take, we hire five or six every year. We're trying to catch up with the growth. But when, what, when we have new subdivisions of 1,000 homes, you're supposed to hire, I'd say, four or five police officers to go with it. They're not paying for the police officers because the impact fee for police officers, you can't use for salaries. It has to go to vehicles and equipment. So here you have a load of money from the impact fees for new developments and you can't use it because we can't hire police officers to drive those patrol cars. So.
So you have all the patrol cars, you got all the police department, you got, yeah, Starr is sitting on a, on a vacant fire department.
There you go.
It's got a brand new fire department and literally cannot afford the salaries. And there, you, obviously, I'm sure you've heard from people that say, hey, look, the growth, the developers should be paying for this and we shouldn't. And the problem is obviously salaries are indefinite, right? Salaries are forever. So you have this one time fee. You're like, hey, developer, we want 50 grand. I don't know, pick whatever the numbers. I want $50,000. Well, you can't go back to them after the house is built and sold and they paid the $50,000 and be like, no, 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 I need another 50. It's just like, well, I gave you the money. Okay. Like you can't do that. It has to be the, the tax base that then supports that. And there's no mechanism, aside from like override levies and, and things of that nature, to fund those salaries.
I, I, I did a survey and you're absolutely right with that. I did a survey from, from, from when, in our, our community and I said, would you pay an override levy for, for police? 99% said yes. How much is it? How much would it be? Sure, if it's going to be a thousand dollars, they're going to say no, of course.
Sure, sure. A lot of detail said.
Right. And so, but, but the concept and the principle of yes, we would, we would support the Napa Police Department. Would you support new streets? Now it's a little different. It's a little different because you're taking care of people and that's, that's a whole different ballgame right there.
Sure.
People want to be safe in Napa. All right. So now we go back to, well, what's the alternative here? What, how can we bring in more funds, more money? If we can't use more shared revenue from the state, if we can't use, if we can't turn the impact fee statute around where we can use to maintain.
Sure.
And repair. We are maxed out on our tax, taxable amount that we can assess mitigation fee. I don't know, I don't know if I like to call it a mitigation fee, but either way is, is attach another fee to the developers per house that, that would allow us to use a one-time fee for police officers' salaries. Now you can put that police officer in the vehicle that nobody can drive because we don't have enough cops.
Sure.
There you go. And so I think that's a good idea, but according to our legal, that, nah, you can't do that. Well, I'm not convinced yet. So therefore we're stuck. We're stuck. So.
It's, it's such a differ, and if, if I may, one, I've heard from some people that one anxiety they have with engaging in levies to fund, let's say, let's say you find the issue, like everybody's on board with law enforcement. Let's, let's pass a levy, get like, get a little bit more funding. Everybody pulls together like, yeah, like go blue, like we're there, right? One problem or anxiety that people have is like, yeah, but look, here's what's going to happen. If we put that levy into law enforcement, then they're going to underfund law enforcement slightly and fund the other things that people would not be, then they'd start fixing the streets with money they would have been putting to law enforcement. And then they're going to come back because this is the issue that we all believe in. They'll come back in like four years and be like, hey, we, you know, remember that levy? Like we need some more for the law, because that's the issue, right? And I'm not saying you guys would do that at all, but I know that is an issue or a concern that some people have about like, well, look, if we start doing this, if this is our issue, if law enforcement is our issue, then they will underfund it in the other general budget and then lean heavily on that levy and they'll use that, they'll reroute the funds to pay for the things that people wouldn't pass a levy for.
Rubbing Peter to pay Paul.
Right. And again, I'm not accusing you of doing that. I'm just saying like, I know there, there's almost like no good solution because there are problems and anxieties everywhere.
Well, I think if the community, it's their say so, they're the ones paying, paying the taxes.
And they're the ones either receiving the services or not.
There you go. If they say yes to any kind of increase of a levy, I'm for that. If they say no, then we've got to find another way. And what are the way that is? I have no idea right now because we're maxed out on everything we can do. So the override levy that was proposed earlier by the city council, I said no. And the reason why? Because I didn't have all the information of, of the, what it was going to cost the taxpayers, how much we were going to get. 32 million, 100, I, I, that information wasn't, we didn't, I didn't know that information. But it's all based on community. How much do you want to pay?
Right.
Bottom line is, how much can you pay out of your own budget to support us, the city of Nampa? We're all on fixed incomes and it's all going to be our budget versus the city of Nampa. Well, my say, my saying is, if you want it and you can get it, buy it. But if you want it and can't pay for it, too bad. You ain't getting it. And that is the way my budgeting, simple philosophy is.
That's pretty simple.
Pretty simple.
You got the money, go do whatever you want. You don't got it, you don't get whatever you want.
You don't get it. And that's, and that's what I've been telling people is, look, I'm not here to spend your money. I'm here to try to keep your money in your pocket. And if we could give back to you like the state of Idaho did in our, in, in, in the COVID days, they gave you money back. Well, yeah, I could do, I would love to do that. I don't know how, but it would sure sound like a great idea.
It does. Obviously, Nampa is experiencing tremendous growth, as are other areas in the Treasure Valley. And there are some people that are saying, hey, look, we, there, we should revise the comprehensive plan. We should revise zoning. We should revise all these other things. Because growth, as we've kind of been talking about, how it's not really paying for itself in the way that people want it to. They're like, well, look, if growth is the problem, let's, let's step on that, let's hit the brakes a little bit with growth. So like, do you, there are a lot of problems around that, right? Like again, no easy solution here. What do you, what do you think about managing growth?
Okay. My, my slogan is slow the pace. And, and I think we need to do that. The, the, and, and to save our place. Now, what I'm telling you is this, if you, if you come to Nampa and you find a beautiful subdivision, it's nice and quiet and your streets are, are, are beautiful and.
Just right.
Like, like your neighborhood here.
Yeah, sure.
Beautiful neighborhood and it's a safe neighborhood. All right. A developer comes to Nampa and he says, I want to build three-story apartment complexes in your backyard. And I want to build 100 of them. And then I'm going to build smaller homes. What did that just do to your neighborhood? And it's not a good, not a good beginning because your neighborhood is going to be up against, you'll no longer see the sun because you'll see apartment complexes. All right. So in, in, for example, Southwest Napa, it is from Middleton Road over to North Indiana or South Indiana. That's only three miles. And then you have the Lake Lowell, which is Greenhurst Road, all the way north to, to Orchard. That's five miles. Caldwell is building right up to us. They've got 1,000 home subdivision in that area. Well, now the city of Napa proposed, they call the Southwest Area Plan, an increase between 13,000 people to 30,000 people in a three and a half, or three mile wide, five mile long stretches of, of, of land. How is that going to work? It's, it's not feasible with me. I'm thinking, mix in agricultural land and then mix in the, 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 the Lake Lowell and the refuge. Now you're destroying the environment. Now you're, you're up against, you're butting up against and squeezing out ag land.
Right.
For development. So I came up with a plan. This is, and, and I'm just going to read it to you. It says this. Increase the impact fees for each development. Maybe, and, and I'm thinking that the, the, the impact fees per house is about $20,000, give or take. There's a total city impact and connection fees are 16,796. And the end city impact fee is 10,202, somewhere around there. So that's, that's what each developer pays for each home. So we get that, right? Because they're paying for connections to water and so on, streets and road. Okay. But remember, it's impact fee. We can't use for operations. Well, we can't use for salaries. All right. This is how we do it. If West Nampa is restrained by dead ends, that forces our, 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 our travelers, I guess, to all run our vehicles to run north toward Highway 55. And back into Nampa because you can't go anywhere else.
True.
Yeah, because it's land restraints. North Nampa has wide open, there's east and west streets. You can go from Palmer, Idaho, all the way to the other side of Boise. Yeah. And then the north and south streets, you can go to all the way to Eagle or all the way to Melba. West Nampa, you can only go two places, north toward Highway 55 and back into Nampa. You see, East Nampa is residential, of course, and you can go all the way to Boise, to Caldwell, to Palmer. Good, wide open streets, roads, or you can go, you can travel, you can go to Eagle and south to Melba. Okay. South Nampa, you can go south to Nampa and back into Nampa. You see what I'm saying about travel? So when the development starts coming in and going, we're going to build 2,000, 5,000, 10,000 homes, West Nampa, it doesn't compute with me. I'm going, no, that's, that's crazy. Population is going to increase and you're going to have nowhere to go.
Yeah, you're going to be, you're going to pigeonhole until like a little place.
Exactly.
And you're only going to have, you can go north or you can go back into Nampa. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, so I'm thinking this, let's, let's think about the whole equation here. Is the development good for Nampa? Is the, or is the development good for the homeowner? Or is the development good for the developer?
Yeah.
Or is it a burden to the taxpayer? An example, is it, is it good for the community to have 1,400 square foot homes by next to a 2,000 square foot subdivision? No, it's not. Is it good for the homeowner? No. Is it, is it good for the developer? Sure. More houses, more profit. Is it a burden to the taxpayer? Sure. Because we have to pay for streets and roads to get there. And police and fire, see what I mean? It's a bargaining down the, 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 okay. So I said, well, let's, let's increase the impact fees. Let's reduce subdivision density. I would like to see, according to the, to our geographical area, let's build, if you, if you have a 2,000 square foot subdivision, the next one should be 2,000 square foot. We're going to save your property. We're going to save your, your environment. We're going to balance this growth here.
True.
Yeah. Cause you don't want 15,000 square foot home next to you. It's a starter home. Yours is not a starter home. There are locations for starter homes and there are locations for, for beginning families. Yes, I get that. Then we have to regulate the zone. The zones right now, Napa says, if you want to build a 1,500 square foot house next to a 2,000, you can't. And I'm thinking, yeah, I don't know if that's going to work for me because here in North Napa, there was a million dollar homes, half acre lots to acre lots and right up against it, three-story apartment complexes. Oh, no, that was, no, 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 that's not right. People invested in our property and our, and, and their own residences, they shouldn't have to worry about this. The other one is prioritizing home quality over quantity. You want your home and your neighboring to be just like your home and not have a degrading residence next to you and, or a subdivision next to you. Even more than that is that these developments now want to impose on your development and connect to your streets. So here you have a thousand home, a thousand home subdivision and it makes it easier for them to connect to your streets for their pathway to the main roads that you've already established your road to. Now you got to increase in traffic. That isn't good because your streets are not made for routes. It's not made for two ways, two, two-way travel. It's made to, it's made to, for you and your neighbors. Okay.
So if I may, just to kind of sum up a couple of things, so potentially decreased density with incoming housing, right? So you have fewer, fewer houses going on to the same amount of property and make sure that you have essentially. And make sure that you have essentially a transition area so that you don't have 2,000 or 3,000 square foot houses right next to starter houses, 1,500. Make sure you also have a buffer area when you're going to put in things like apartments and whatnot compared to single family residents, homeowners stuff. And in, increase impact fees so that you have more money to work with as growth comes in so that you can continue preserving what exists already in Nampa.
Right. That's the thing that, that, is that, uh, we have to adjust growth to Nampa's needs.
Right.
Not to developers' needs. That's important.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then so, and then of course, the second one is the increase in costs of two, to each homeowner. That we have to take care of. And that's, that's your mitigation fee.
Gotcha.
I hope I explained it.
No, no, I, listen.
It's a better picture with the way I see it.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I get what you're saying and it makes sense, right? Like obviously, if you're gonna decrease density, that's gonna take a lot of pressure off the existing systems. If you, if you're asking developers to pay a little bit more, um, to, to help preserve what Nampa already, it's like, all this makes perfect sense, right?
Okay.
For sure.
Good.
Um, talk to me about revitalizing downtown of the economy. Because we've talked about growth and stuff and this kind of ties into, you know, we need more people for economic activity, but we also need infrastructure for businesses to come in. Like, talk to me about the downtown area.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw something at you.
Okay.
If, have you been to downtown Nampa?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So do you walk, do you park downtown Boise in the parking lot? And then you walk to wherever you gotta go?
Sure. Yeah, if I'm going to like the Grove or something, yeah.
Right on, okay. Do you park in our parking lot and then do you walk downtown?
Nope.
Exactly.
I park right where, right next to the front door.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Why? Why? Yeah, that's the, that's the question. And you're like a thousand other.
Yeah.
People in Nampa. Yeah. So if they don't do that, and, and, and then what's the answer? Is it traffic? Is it walk and a half, quarter mile? I don't know the answer. I do, but, but we have to make it accessible. I, I, as a councilman, have been downtown a lot. I, I speak to the businesses a lot. And of course, you know that the problem is, is parking and, and then, and then availability of, of being able to get in there to our downtown. The second thing is, most importantly, is the style of, of businesses that we have. Right now, um, there are coffee shops and restaurants and alcohol. But what is there for the children? What is there for an out, died, outside venue? Outside venue is our Lloyd Square. Well, look at Boise's, look at Meridian's, it's totally different. So I would like to see there, I would like to see our, our downtown grow. But the problem we're having is that these buildings are old. They're hard to take, manage and to take care of. And the businesses are not making money like I want them to, to survive and their profit is down. Because we don't have all the people going there and we don't have the, the stores that we need downtown. Years ago, I mean, uh, uh, that was a hub. Well, it's no longer the hub. And one of the things that we're doing, Matt, we're allowing our developers to build their little communities with their own retail in the city, outside of downtown area. We're pulling away those who would have gone downtown to stay in their communities. Isn't that crazy? So how are we helping downtown by building spot retail like Boise does, like Ada County does? Anywhere you go, uh, uh, around to the, uh, uh, major intersections in the county, you have spot stores. Well, that's hurting downtown Nampa.
Right.
And that's what's, and so I guess the answer, I wish I knew. But what do we do about downtown? I know there's a Napa Development Corporation, there's Urban Renewal, that's what.
Yes.
Okay. I, I would like for them to invest in downtown. If they, like Caldwell did, Caldwell bought land, bought buildings and started to do something about downtown. Look at what they're doing, Engine Creek. Maybe we should start doing that. And I've discussed that with, with some of the commissioners, um, on the Urban Renewal Board and said, look, no more buying flowers. Yeah, no more paying for surveys that tell us what we already know. That we need to start investing in our businesses and get some, get $5 million out and say, okay, here it is. What do we do with it? And we're gonna give it to downtown. I would even say that. I think that's where we need to get going and quit talking about it. So that's where I'm at.
Gotcha. So perhaps reprioritize some of the urban renewal funds and really just try to get, get everybody in line with, look, we need to revitalize downtown a little bit, just be it aesthetically or functionally. And, you know, then try to attract business as best as possible.
That's the only, you know what? I like the way you talk. You're exactly right. Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. And, 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 and quit relying on, 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 on the businesses to come up with ideas. We can't do that.
Well, the other problem is you have, you know, let's say you have a hundred businesses downtown. It's like they all have different needs. Some want more foot traffic, some don't need, some, if you're a mechanic shop, you're a destination, right? If you're a coffee shop, like you need, or if you're like a small boutique, you need foot traffic. Like you have a lot of different needs. And so it's kind of like, look, if everybody just has their own ideas and you got a hundred businesses, you might have a hundred different ideas, it, you know, that's just too much. Like there needs to be a unifying plan that brings everyone together.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I, yeah, that's, that's in a nutshell, exactly what I, what, what, what I'm thinking.
Gotcha.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, of course. With, with this in mind, talk to me about CWI. Because, or excuse me, not CWI, but the Ford Idaho Center and the conveyance, potential conveyance of CWI.
Boy, what a topic. This is.
I know, I keep hitting you with like these big, broad.
No, um, I'm a strong proponent that if we are going to, we the city, and I'm only speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the other councilman or the mayor. Okay. Is in the process of purchasing or leasing or, or, or conveying any property whatsoever within the city of Nampa. I believe that we should have an ag hock committee that says, that's built, made up of businessmen, bankers, investors. They have a portfolio of designing, uh, profit and, and or negative profit. Giving us the whole picture before we step into this realm of, we're gonna give the Ford Idaho Center away and here's your benefit, I think. That's what it is right now. Uh, and let them folks give us a whole report on availability of funds, uh, what'll happen in 10 years from now. Can CWI handle it? You see, that, that's what I'm, that's what hasn't been done and that's the report I wanna see, but it'll never happen because we're beyond that. So that's the beginning base of my direction. The second thing is, is, is this, since we don't have that ahah committee, we can't rely on them, on their full report of.
Sure.
Investments. Then you have, you have six councilmen and a mayor that believe that a good direction is a positive direction for the city of Nampa. And if we relieved the city of taxpayers of the Ford Idaho Center, then we have money in the bank. Money that we can give back to the community. I get that as well. We maybe reduce the taxes of something. Maybe, maybe use that, let's say $11 million to fix our streets and roads. Use it for another direction for, for our taxpayers. Okay, I get that as well. But if it's owned by the taxpayers. The bottom line is, I'm pretty strong about this. You do not give taxpayer owned property away for free. That doesn't work without them, without their approval. If the, from the get go, if we should have said, Nampa, we're thinking about doing something in Ford Idaho Center because here are the parameters, here are the, here are the discussions and here's where we are right now. We can't fund it, we can't fix it, we can't tax you any more than what we already are. What's the question, what's the answer here? Here's the question, do you want it? Let them decide. But here's your options. One, sell it. Two, go sell it and, and return the investment that you just paid for 30 years back to the community. Reduce the taxes, give you a, give you a check for what you paid. That'd be cool. I know that's not gonna happen, but it would be a good idea.
Yeah, right.
The second one is lease it and get, uh, uh, lease it to a company or a business or whoever that says, we're gonna pay each city of Nampa $3 million a year to run it. That would be good because now we're getting a return of our investment and we can use that money for other city services.
And they can take on the risk and the maintenance and everything.
There you go. And then the third one is keep it and figure out what we're gonna do. But that decision should be made by the taxpayers since they're the ones paying for it and funding it. So, uh, the fourth thing is, if, if the business management company is doing as everything they can to, to increase their, their profit and increase the Nampa's half of it, then good for them. But if they're not, in a corporate world, you wouldn't be here. But they have restraints as well. So I'm thinking, all right, put all this together, give it to the community and say, here's the full report. You guys make the decision and we'll do as you ask. We will follow what you say. That's where I'm at.
And it, it goes back to, you know, something you said in passing earlier, which is, look, if you got the money, do whatever you want.
There you go.
If you don't got the money or you don't wanna spend the money, you can't have it.
Right.
Because again, and I don't know anything really about the Ford Idaho Center or all the nuances. I've talked to a lot of people about it, like it seems very complex, but it always, in my mind, came back to, look, i- if the community wants it and it's gonna continue taking a loss or, or not make a profit, then they have to be prepared to. And, and if they don't, they're like, no, man, I don't wanna spend any money. It's like, well, in spite of our best efforts over the last 10 years, it's like we've turned a profit once or twice. Like, so you have to be prepared.
Right.
To pay this in your taxes. And I'm not advocating for it, I'm not saying it's a good idea, bad idea, whatever. You decide whatever you wanna do. You got the money, you keep it. You don't want, wanna pay the money, you don't keep it and that's it.
Exactly. I, one thing that I've said, I, I, I've said, CWI, if you want it, buy it. You've got the funds for it. Sure. CWI, if you don't wanna buy it and you wanna lease it, do it. You got the money, you can do that. The answer, no.
Right.
Why, why should they buy it? They're getting it for free.
Right.
It's a good investment for them. And, and I actually think it would be a good investment for the city as well. It's just a principle that I just told you that I think it needs to be decided by the voters. That's all.
Yeah, the, the self determination.
There you go.
Right? Figure out whatever you want for your destiny and go in that direction.
There you go.
You want more police, you're gonna have to pay for more police.
Yeah.
You want more, you want the Ford Idaho Center, you're gonna have to pay for that. And, but like you get to decide and the city of Nampa gets to have a degree of self determination.
There you go. Yeah, that's, that's pretty, my, my, my direction's pretty simple. And, uh, we'll be voting on that Monday night. We'll see what happens.
Yeah. Victor, we've talked about a lot of different things, um, as, as we kind of come here to, to the end short on time. Is there anything we've missed that you really wanna hit? And again, I know we've, we've really gone all around.
We have, you have, uh, no, I, uh, uh, I don't, my, my objective is I don't want Nampa to be a metropolitan city of, 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 of overpopulation. And I'm, and I really wanna curtail the, the growth that protects our citizens and our, and, and our community over development. And, uh, uh, I'm hoping that that development will slow. According to reports now, it has, uh, growth has slowed in o- other cities. I'd like to slow it up a little bit and have a, uh, a breath of fresh air come in and say, wow, we're, we need to stop a little. We need to stop and we need to figure out where our direction is. So we can make Nampa, I hate to say it, a better place. Because that's a, you know, that's a jargon people use all the time, but, but, but you know what, I really mean that. And, and, and I, I would like to see that our taxpayers that, I wanna give them a break from all this growth and all this taxes in the Ford Idaho Center. I want them to get some good news. And right now, Matt, there isn't a lot of good news out there. You know, so we need to just sit back and be mentors, be leaders like we, we were, we were hired to be and stand tall for them. And I think that needs to be done and I might err with them. Yeah.
Well, Victor, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. I've enjoyed this.
Yeah, I told you, it's not a bad time. And thank you for what you've done for Nampa already, right? Like whenever, there are a lot of, a lot of elections going on in, in the Treasure Valley. And some people are deciding that they've, they've served their community and they're done. And that's, that's wonderful and I appreciate their service wherever they are. But you know, you're, you're re-upping it, you know, you, you are a law enforcement agent, you served your community in that capacity. Now you've been serving, uh, you know, in this public forum. And we need people like that. We need people that are willing to serve, that are willing to continue to serve, to bring the skillsets and the ideas and knowledge they have. So again, thank you for what you're doing for Nampa and, uh, you know, good luck with your campaign.
God bless you, Matt. Thank you.